We'll call the meeting to order. We have a quarrel. This is the May twenty-second Public Works Committee of the Hall, Environmental Services and Facilities. Could I have a mover to approve the agenda, please?
Don't move.
Mr. Hunter? Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Okay, who's that, sorry?
Right here.
The mayor? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is the May twenty-first, not the May twenty-second.
I'm sorry, did I say twenty-second?
Yeah.
Well, it says May twenty-first, right here.
You've got to be right.
But it is May twenty-second, you're right. Okay.
No, it's May twenty-first.
Yes, Tuesday, May twenty-first. Okay, any, do we have, we don't have to call for the approval, okay. Well, I'm going to call the question on approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof.
None here.
Hearing none?
None here.
Q? Okay, number four, business arising from the previous Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities meeting, if any.
Waiting for others, Mr. Chair.
Hearing, I'm hearing none, go ahead.
Okay, so I have three, on page six of seven. There are sort of follow-ups. So first of all, on the Gallup Canal Ridge railing replacements. First question, have there been any change orders or contingencies on that contract as of today? If I may, Mr. Chair, through the chair.
Second.
So through the chair, there have been none to date?
Okay, no changes, no contingencies. Second question, if I may, on page six of seven, the same page, item number F, which was the adoption of the municipal smoking policy. And on the last part of the briefing note, it was noted that appropriate signing, appropriate signage will be placed in public areas. And we have passed the bylaw, I believe, at the council meeting at the end of the month. And I'm just wondering if the signs have been prepared? And if not, is it too late to have those signs reference the bylaw number on the bottom of the bylaw? On, excuse me, on the bottom of the signage?
If I may, Mr. Chair, the, I don't believe that the signs have been ordered. We do try to avoid the bylaw number on signs, just because it means if we update the bylaw, we have to change the signs. But we can certainly follow the committee's direction on that.
Well, this will be a new bylaw. I understand that, it's just that I feel it gives it a bit more oomph. And how many signs would we be requiring? So I've heard they were forty or fifty?
Oh, I don't think there'd be that many, Mr. Mayor. I think it would probably be maybe a dozen or so to start, and then as we start to see public areas, we may recommend more.
Well, I'm at the will of the committee, too. It's a suggestion, Mr. Chair, so the issue is to be dealt with at some point. Does the, does the signage include the bylaw reference number or not?
Can we do that at the, can we bring that forward at council meeting? Or does it have to go to committee first?
No, we can, I mean, if it suits the committee, we can deal with it right now. If you like the bylaw number on it, and at the committee's direction, it's a small issue.
Okay, then we'll do it right now. Bylaw number?
Yep.
I'm getting a feeling around the table it's a yes.
Thank you.
So third issue, if I may. On item number G, on the same page, six of seven, we have a report on the greater repairs. I'm wondering if we have a cost of those repairs yet? Through the chair, if I may.
Through the chair, the, the cost of the repairs are in. I do not have the exact number off the top of my head. But it's fairly close to what the estimate was in that information item, last one.
And second question, if I may, are both of those machines operable at this point in time?
Through the chair, yes, they are.
Okay, the reasons for my questions, for those questions will become obvious, that item number eight on the agenda. That's all the questions that I have for now.
Any other questions? I just, I just have one, and it's regarding, on page two, letter B, sewer charges, Dunbar Street. I'm just curious, has anyone feedback on that?
No, I haven't heard anything further from, from Mr. Porter.
The Q? And that brings us to five, which is delegations and presentations, and I see none. Number six is a discussion item on the Johnstown Servicing Survey, and I believe our CIO would like to comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, staff was directed at the last meeting to make a slight addition to the, to the survey document, which we have done. We've also sort of adjusted the dates, just because we're getting sort of further along into the season. I know that in the last meeting, we talked about potentially doing some door-to-door delivery of these letters. And my hope had been that we would have some staff available in the summer months, because of summer students and stuff. But it appears now that the, we have two individuals in the Parks and Recreation Department who are going to be off on disability for a period of between four and eight weeks. So I'm not going to be as amply staffed as I otherwise might have been. So staff is suggesting that we potentially do a mail-out to each registered owner. That way, we avoid having accidentally gotten opinions from tenants, which would be good. And then a follow-up, you know, we'll keep close track of who has responded in a follow-up, as well providing some way for people to respond electronically for those folks who don't want to deal with mail. We would include a self-addressed stamp envelope with the survey document, in hopes that that would encourage everyone to respond.
Okay, so a question, I see that this is a draft, and I'm just drawing your attention, I know, I'm sure it'll be corrected, but just want to double-check on that. So when it talks on the place where they take yes or no, I am willing to commit the spending up to, I know that that's seven hundred, but when I first glanced at it, I thought it was seven thousand nine hundred.
Me, too.
Yeah, so that's, that's a track changes, we'll track changes.
Yeah, so when the original goes out, it'll say seven hundred. And so the seven hundred should raise about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars if all two hundred and twenty-four of the houses responded yes. So the two, the hundred and fifty-six thousand, we're still estimating an estimated cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand, are we? Okay, so what I'm wondering is, because on the bottom of the line, we require seventy percent of letters returned, and eighty-five percent of the return letters indicating yes. So eighty-five percent of the return letters indicating yes will not produce us the hundred and fifty thousand that we need. Now, of course, we don't know the exact amount of that, of the contract at this point in time. But I'm wondering, I mean, I think we're fully committed that the property owners would pay the cost of that survey, are we not?
We are, but my, my, I believe staff's intent here was that everyone would pay whether they said yes or not.
Okay, now is that clear?
Well, the township needs residents to be aware that all costs are, you know, have to be covered by the residents.
And all on an ongoing, and all ongoing operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of components are solely covered by the resident system. I guess, when you read it, I hope it's clear.
Oh, we can certainly throw some words around that, if that's necessary, yeah.
So whether you say yes or no, if the majority is yes. The other question that I think we had at the last meeting was, if the survey indicates that, that this is a doable thing, supported by eighty-five percent of the return letters, we do intend to pass a bylaw which would make connection to the system mandatory. And I, that, I mean, that's clearly our intent. And if that paragraph signals that intent clearly, then I'm comfortable. But there's two steps here.
Any other, any other discussions? Yes?
I have one, Mr. Chair, man. We had it, we had it last month, April fifteenth, not even the month, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And now it's a hundred and fifty thousand. Did it go up twenty-five thousand in twenty-one days?
So through, through the chair, the draft letter in April was a hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh, no, not that I got here. Unless I'm missing some tests or whatever, Chair, and I can inform the letter. A hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Johnstown water, complete a hundred and twenty-five thousand comparable cost for the sewer MCEA, that's what I have here.
So through, through the chair, the hundred and twenty-five thousand was referencing the Class E that was done for the water system about three or four years ago.
Yes, that's right.
Correct. So through, through the chair, the original draft letter, which is in front of you tonight, with any of the draft changes, indicated that it was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay, okay, so is there a slight difference between the recent and the, yeah, I see that. Okay, that was, yes, well, of course, it's estimated, only anybody, and there's a time lag in between there, three or four years. It's hard to know what these consultants are going to, oh.
So through the, through the chair, there was discussion at the April meeting about dropping it to one twenty-five, and the feeling was that you would rather be estimating a little higher than have something come in, that the final costs were at a hundred and fifty thousand, and you indicated the upset limit at a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, any other questions, Counselor? Questions down here? Is there no recommendation on this, or we just, you have your directions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, just to be sure, so this is the letter that's going out, that's going out by mail with a return on hold?
Correct, that's what I understand. And the changes will be made.
And with the option that we can respond electronically?
As well.
And the, the descent to the owners of the property?
Owners only.
Now, who's living in that, I wish to be.
When would the mail-out be?
Um, probably first of next week. I don't know. No point in waiting. Well, actually, we should, we should wait until after the council meeting, just to be sure that these minutes are approved. But, yeah, I mean, once that's done and the edits are made, there's no reason to hold up.
Okay, that brings us to number seven, which is the action and information items. And the first one on the list is A, the first quarter facility maintenance report, information item. And, Mr. Spencer, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the first quarterly report, as indicated, I wasn't, I was away on vacation in April, so that's why it wasn't submitted then. So I'll just briefly touch on a couple areas. The Spencerville Library, as counsel was aware, had some minor water damage in the basement as a result of the ongoing spring thaw that we had. So just indicating what was done, and the basement is back in working condition, and the friends of the library are extremely pleased with the end result and the way things were able to turn out there. We also, not as part of that, but we did also install the new propane furnace as part of our capital projects for this past year, for this year. Ingredient Center, just indicating a couple items of note. The relief valves, as we had indicated before, were part of the TSSA requirements, and they were completed. On the Spencerville Arena, the system was shut down. Maintenance checks were done on the eighteenth of March. Plenary work has already started on the installation of the new chiller. They have the old one out, and the new one is due to be installed sometime before the end of June, at the latest. Staff basically did a complete scrub down of all change rooms and a fresh coat of paint, and it was installed on change rooms and all showers, so everything is ready to go for this September after the pair. The Johnstown Community Center, just touching base on the outside washrooms, I've had some vandalism done to them in the fall. They've been completely renovated and cleaned up, and ready to go for the ball program. And as I indicated before, we have the automatic locks on them, so they lock each night at ten o'clock now, and open in the morning at eight o'clock. And then below is just a work plan of some of the things that we have in place for the last couple weeks and the next couple weeks coming, for staff that are doing. That's it for that report. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Through the chair. The Ingredient Center, the boiler was replaced already?
That's correct.
What was wrong, what happened?
It was, this, the boiler is, is the system that is used for heating the, in-floor heating, so it's constantly running, and life expectancy on those is anywhere from six to ten years, and we got six years, almost seven years over. And that's with regular maintenance. We have a, an ongoing maintenance program, and that is one of the items that are inspected twice a year.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah. So you say it's running constantly, we don't, it doesn't run in summer, does it?
Well, just the two months, that is, that the arena shut down. For July and August, the rest of the season it works. Because basically, it, it works to keep the floor of the, the change rooms at a, a level temperature, so that the, there's no moisture kept in the change rooms.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, okay. And another question, if I may. So on the Spencerville Library, do you have the total cost of that little cleanup? And second question, was, was it all our staff?
Yes, it was, it was, sorry, through the chair, it was my staff that completed the work, and we were on about fifteen, fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars in total, which included the installation, or sorry, the installation, new lumber, vapor barrier, and whatever you.
And, if I may, Mr. Chair, so through the chair, one last question. Water had flowed through the west basement windows, so is there no window wells to prevent that happening?
There is a window well there.
Came over the window well?
It did.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor?
Mr. Spencer, the boiler, isn't there a ten to fifteen-year heat exchange year warranty on that? Like, is that under warranty?
No, it was not under, through the chair, it was not under warranty. The warranty on those items are two years.
On, on a boiler's two years?
That's correct.
What kind of boiler is it, through the chair?
It's a, a hot water boiler, that's ran through natural, or sorry, through electric.
Through the chair, do we have, that, that boiler, it does in-floor heating?
That's correct.
Is electric and not natural gas?
That's correct. Through the chair, that was the way the, the system was set up.
It's electric, or is it fully electric?
Doesn't say.
Doesn't say.
Mr. Spencer's telling us, it is electric, eh?
Yeah, that's correct.
Phew, well, that's why we've got, or ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollar bills a month. Part of it is, especially if it doesn't shut off, which I believe it wouldn't shut off.
Well, it cycles down at night.
Yeah, but I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Now, dude's saying that, we got a new boiler, hopefully we give it to someone who's local and pays taxes, yes? Like J and J Heating, or Jensen Plumbing Heating, did we, or who did the work, or?
Through the chair, Morseburg Plumbing and Heating were the ones that did the work.
Did we give it an estimate, or like, tendered it, or there's no?
No, we didn't.
No estimate?
Sure, the chair, if I may. I guess what's really bothering me about this, I didn't realize the boiler was electric fired, or heated, or operated by electrical. When we were changing a boiler like that, I mean, we have an opportunity to change the heat source, did we not even look at getting this boiler converted to natural gas? Natural gas available in Cardinal? Can't imagine that we'd still be heating a boiler with electricity. That's just not, I mean, especially with electrical costs the way they are. So did we look at that?
Through the chair, no, we did not.
Maybe something that should be considered, perhaps?
Well, I mean, I, I know that Counselor Dilva has mentioned on a couple of occasions the high cost of hydro on, on both these facilities, and, you know, I, I know I'm very sensitive to hydro cost, because I understand that, I understand that there's big savings to be, to be realized.
Now, any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Through the chair, to our arena, have the steps, we budgeted further for the pool in Cardinal, or are they being installed, or when are they going to be?
They will be installed before the arena's inspected, or sorry, they will be installed before the pool is inspected on the twenty-second of June.
I have some stuff, you're all finished, but on them down there?
Yes, just a little bit of, a couple small areas that need to be done, but the entire deck was removed and reinstalled.
If I may, just ask, ask one question. The Johnstown Community Center, the, the new locks, these are automatic locks?
That is correct.
How expensive are those? And, and I'm not trying to, I'm just, I'm just thinking that there's other, that there's other areas, that if they were of a reasonable cost, that we could use them in other areas as well. And I'm thinking primarily of the, the washrooms at the Cardinal canteen, where walkers in the morning, it's not open, and walkers are there anywhere from six-thirty on, and if they could be automatically set to open and close, like these ones are, that might be a, a good project.
Mr. Chair, I reported, I'm not sure what report it was, but in one of my past reports, I indicated that they were installed at that facility as well.
Oh, I'm, oh, they are? Oh, fantastic, okay, okay. I'll, I'll be walking tomorrow.
I believe the timer that we have set up there is eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
And I believe they shut, that they close, they lock at ten o'clock at night as well.
Thank you for that.
Is that your bathrooms, too, Mr. Spencer, in Johnstown?
Through the chair, it's the outside washrooms at the back of the building, at the hall in Johnstown, and at the canteen facility in Cardinal, that's the two washrooms, the men's and the ladies'.
Are they open now, though, in Johnstown? I tried to use them the other day.
Yes, they are.
Gee, they're fitting it in, okay.
What day did you try to use them?
Like Tuesday or Wednesday, I was at.
No, they were not set till Friday.
Oh, thank you, okay, good, thanks.
Okay, do I hear any other questions for the facilities manager? Okay, there's no recommendation on this, so if you have the information, we'll move on. And we now have seven B, the first quarter facilities stats report update. And I believe, Mike, that is your department again?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, excuse me, these numbers are just for January, February, and March of, of this year. And on page two at the bottom, it gives a quarter-to-quarter comparison from two nineteen to two eighteen. So you can see, all but the quarter Johnstown meeting room had increases from two thousand and eighteen. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Seeking questions? Mr. Mayor?
So I think the key to this report for me, well, first of all, you did in the, in the covering note indicate that everybody's using the, the booking program to do it?
That is correct.
So that's a good thing. And I'm impressed with the percentages of the, of the various facilities, but the one that really impresses me is the, is the three reports about the two arenas, the January, February, and March report for the arenas. So we can see from these reports that we're getting about ninety-eight percent primetime usage in, in January, ninety-eight percent primetime usage in February, in both Ingredient and Spencerville, and ninety percent primetime usage Ingredient in Cardinal, and ninety-eight percent again, primetime usage in Spencerville. Now, that tells me that we're operating on those facilities right to the optimum, and I'd like to have, and I suppose you could say to me, I can copy this, but, and I think I will, and I'm going to keep that in my pocket. I think that may become very valuable in, in future discussions.
Through the, through the chair, if I may, just, one thing I didn't note was, for the ice time for the Spencerville Arena for March is less hours over Ingredient Center, and that's because the ice came out on the sixteenth of March. So it's not a complete month.
Oh, in Spencerville.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
When does the ice go out, Mike, in, in Ingredient?
Through the chair, this Sunday will be the last rental. So we'll take the ice out on Monday of, of next week.
So there we can, when will it back in, later?
Uh, no, it'll be ready to go for the eighth or ninth of August. Right now, I'm working on the tenth as the first start date. If we can rent the ninth, then we open on the ninth. If we rent the eighth, we just keep backing it up a day. If we can rent it, if we don't, then the, the ninth is the day it will be ready to go. If we rent it before, then we'll open up.
Anything else, Counselor? Counselor Hunter?
Through the chair, to our facility manager, our, the mayor said this is a very handy report, but have to work another aspect. We are at ninety-eight percent, and we know it's because we have one less arena in the area now that we're renting. And regardless, we're pretty near full, but we still have two percent left, and we do have other off-hours available that aren't heat, but they're fine for adults and such to be using. So there is availability of more hours that can be, can be rented out of these two arenas. And as you said, in Ingredient Center, if it's rented, it could be opened longer, sooner, if we had to open it. If we could have all the ice all booked for the middle of August, or the first part of August, you'd like to have it open for the first of August, if you had a week's ice rental gone out of it. Only question I have here on our hours, we did extend our hours on these this year, didn't we, in both arenas, for what, two hours a day, or what was it we extended for being opened?
Through the chair, you mean on a daily?
On the weekends, we opened earlier, didn't we, on Saturday and Sunday?
We opened on Saturday and Sunday mornings for seven o'clock.
Do we add, what, an extra four hours on the?
That is correct.
So that went in, so we increased our hours from still got their prime time up there. And with that extra increase in hours, we gained extra revenue, but how much, was it a break-even point, that we actually broke even by keeping those four hours with what it cost us to open it, or was it, did it cost us money to add those hours on?
Through the chair, it didn't cost extra from a staffing perspective.
Through the Chair, it, it didn't cost, uh, extra, um, from a staffing perspective, um, basically, um, on weekends, I have an overlap of three hours in the afternoon for our staff. So normally one would work seven till five, the other one would work two with me, so what I did, the union agreed to come in, um, so they open at six and go six till two. And then the other one is, or, or sorry, six till, uh, four, as opposed to seven to five, so instead of a three hour overlap on weekends, there's a two hour overlap now, so there's no extra cost from a, a wage perspective for trying to accommodate the South Grumble Minor Hockey, and it was South Grumble that took those hours on Saturday and Sunday mornings. Um, will they take it this year? Um, I don't know, I'm just working on contracts right now for the upcoming season, and I haven't got their, their final, uh, wish list, and I guess you would say.
But obviously, they had to have them la- last year, and there's still, um, half ice traction some of the times, which in my opinion, they should always have been doing for some of the teams, but it, uh, I can't see that they wouldn't require them, and the Cyclones, Ice and More team this year too.
Through the Chair, I, I do know, um, there were some slots on Saturday or Sunday mornings periodically that would sit. South Grumble pays for it though because they're in a contract, and that's the, the, the good thing that we have with our contracts, there's no cancellation, once you book your ice at the beginning of the year, it's yours for the year. We try to rent it for them if they can't, or, or they're, they're unable to show up, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, they're being held for a long time.
It was still, the Chair would still be there.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
If I could go just a little bit further, because Counselor Hunter was getting at something, and I'd just like to pursue it a little bit further. Um, so outside the prime hours, there are still hours available.
Through the Chair, yes, there are, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so now, in our various discussions that we're having from time to time with other folks, um, we're indicating that we don't see any additional demand. We feel that we're able to satisfy the existing demand, is that an accurate statement?
Um, through the Chair.
If I'm not, tell me I'm wrong.
No, I'd say you're correct. I'd say you're correct.
Okay, that's.
Other than.
We have to have a high comfort level to say that.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
The only group that we weren't able to, uh, offer ice to, um, was the Prescott Figure Skating Club. That's the only group that, uh, and they, you know, last year, the year before, the year before that, I indicated that they should be merging their
Yeah.
their clubs, Spencerville and Prescott together, but there is just, there's not a will for that because of some of the executives on each executive.
But they basically merged, merged anyway because seventy percent of their can skates just joined Spencerville.
Yeah.
Edgersburg Figure Skating Club, twenty percent that were from Maitland area joined Rockville.
Rockville, yeah.
Club, and really their senior skaters, they only had, had six of them, one of them quit. One went to Morseburg, and two went to Rockville.
But the Prescott Figure Skating Club ran a pro- a program out of the, the, um, goal and the net.
Yeah.
In Maitland.
But as you, as you said, amalgamation, like, I spoke to them on that point different times, some of the skaters there, like South Grumble Minor Hockey, uh, uh, Spencerville, Cardinal, and, and Prescott in the hockey have realized that fifteen years ago that you had to amalgamate to survive, but soccer did the same thing, they amalgamated together, it's just that, as you said, some people just are a little too stubborn to realize amalgamation's the way to go for it, so.
But on that question of not being able to accommodate the Prescott Figure Skating Club, um, how short were we of meeting their, their requirement or their demand?
Through the Chair, we didn't have any open ice, and, you know, their normal slots in Prescott, I believe, were Monday, Wednesday, Fridays from four thirty till seven thirty or eight o'clock, and, uh, we just, we're not able to accommodate that.
Did they get any ice time from us at all?
No, they didn't.
Or didn't get any?
No.
Club didn't, club didn't operate last year.
Or the club didn't operate?
Well, they ran the program at the goal and the net, but that's it.
I was kind of accompanied by that.
Well, someone ran it, I'm not sure who, it, it's listed as the Prescott Figure Skating Club, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
They didn't list on, uh, on the skating association, maybe.
Deputy Mayor?
Just so that I'm clear, other than the figure skating club, gen- generally speaking, is it fair to say that South Grumble Minor Hockey, Rito St. Lawrence Kings, Upper Canada Cyclones, and all the Junior C clubs were all accommodated at our two arenas, and they were happy with the service that they received?
Through the Chair, yes, that is correct.
And no, um, ice time issues, they, they got the amount of ice time they were looking for in, in close to the timeframes that they were looking at getting them?
Through the Chair, yes, that is correct, and a lot of, um, there was a lot of jockeying around with the associations, and this was good because if one association knew two weeks from now they weren't going to be able to use a three hour slot, then one of the other associations would pick it up. Um, the Junior Cs, for example, their contract was for every Saturday night, well, they don't play every Saturday night, so they were able to sell some off to South Grumble, to the Kings, to the Cyclones. So it was a lot of paperwork and behind the scene, but they were all, e- everyone got the ice that they required.
They made it work.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor?
We have ninety-eight percent in, in two nineteen, what was it in two eighteen, Mike, roughly, can you remember? Like ninety-eight percent?
For the prime time?
Yeah.
We were looking, um, for the prime time, we were looking, um, in the neighborhood of eighty-five to ninety on a normal.
Eighty-five, okay.
Yeah, what a ten percent increase.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I, I just have one question, uh, Mike, on the available hours that you have listed here, that is the total hours that are available?
Total prime time hours?
No, no, well.
Total hours.
I'm just going by.
So the four fifty is based on fifteen hours a day.
Right, so that is, that is a total.
That is correct.
And I'm, I'm thinking of all the other, uh, on page one as well, so, I'm, okay, that's, that's all I have. Anything else? There's no recommendation on that, so information has been received. Okay, moving on, the, uh, seven C, the Spencerville Lagoon discharge report information item, and I believe it is, uh, Mr. Grant? Or is that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I will divert, uh, to our chief operator, uh, Mr. Shaw, to present the discharge report.
Through the Chair, on, uh, April thirteenth, uh, to April twenty-first, twenty nineteen, combined discharge of affluent, uh, both lagoon cells is approximately seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen cubic meters. Um, the sampling program results determined that affluent criteria were met as per condition three of a certificate of approval. Uh, mean BOD was five point four milligrams per liter, suspended solids fourteen point three, total phosphorus point one six, ammonia three point nine, and H two S was zero.
This has always been a very detailed report, and we always, uh, we always seem to, uh, have good, good figures. Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
So, my first question got answered as I read through the entire report, which had to do, and I was particularly interested in the upstream and downstream readings. Uh, so I noticed the word on the chart, but I, as I went through the report, uh, and we're talking about the final analysis, so I just had one question, because when I looked at the upstream, downstream, all the numbers seemed to be very, very close, whether it was upstream or downstream. Upstream would be before the affluent came out, and downstream would be after. And so all the numbers appear to be relatively, to show that the, that the discharge had relatively a little impact, except one number. And that's the number on, uh, almost the second last page, which would, it's the second last sheet or the fourth last page, where it's downstream on the South Nation River, and the ammonia total all of a sudden jumps to seven point two one. And, and it looks like it's the nineteenth of April that that test is taken. So do you see where I'm looking? And it seems to be right out of whack with what I'm reading in every, in all the other reports. You see the seven point two one?
Yes, I do. There's different possibilities for that happening, um, there could be some stratification in the lagoons with the ammonia, um, but the, the actual criteria for, uh, ammonia is twenty, so even at seven point two, it's less than half of our criteria.
Okay.
That we have to meet.
Okay, but there's no explanation for why it would jump so much from the other tests?
No, I cannot explain that.
But still below low.
Yeah, it's less than half.
Less than half below, okay, that's my question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Derek, Counselor Hunter? Go ahead.
Uh, one question I had when I seen that, to, uh, it was, sample was taken April thirtieth, I believe, if I believe it was taken, eh? If I recall, we had a quite a rainstorm just, uh, ahead of that, and I know there's a lot of agricultural land right below there where you're, you're sampling, could a lot not have been affected by some runoff from, uh, agricultural land, because I know some of those fields were being like a spread.
Yeah, very well, could have, for the downstream.
Actually, the date collected was nineteenth of April.
Thirty of April, isn't it?
The report date was the thirtieth of April, but the sample, the date, the sample was collected was nineteenth of, sorry. So field spreading.
We also had some, through the Chair, I think, we also had some pretty high winds during that period, and that could have caused some, some shifting and stuff in, in the lagoons themselves, so I can't remember which day they were, but I guess it was probably earlier, I guess, in the other lagoon, but, uh, with some, some ice still left on the lagoon and shifting and so forth, sometimes it'll cause some lips in the, in the.
I just have one other question, and it's just a, maybe a not important question, but just a question of interest, I drive by that all the time, and I know new winnies are discharge it there, but when you drive by it, you don't really seem to see the, the good drop function and depth there, how much depth do you actually take from the height of where it is when you pump it down, how much actual surface depth do you drop?
It varies, um, this year in the South Lagoon, we dropped one point three meters, uh, which, and in the North Lagoon, it was one point oh five meters.
Doesn't, you don't hardly notice it.
It's hard to notice, but if you'd have seen it in, uh, in twenty seventeen, when we had to do the emergency discharge, you can really notice it then, because it was up pretty close to the the top edge in, in the back lagoon anyway, in the north, or south lagoon.
Any other questions? Hearing none, there's no recommendation, we've received good information.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could interrupt this for just a moment, and we could go back to, uh, the report from Mr. Spencer, he just has some additional information with respect to that boiler that he'd like to share.
So, yeah, sorry, uh, through the Chair, um, so the boiler, the, the pump on the boiler which circulates the water to the changing rooms is electric. The heating of the actual water that goes to the changing room is gas.
Oh, wow, that's all good.
My apologies.
That's, that's a big relief.
Yes, sorry about that, I apologize.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, we have a discussion item coming up, um, or information item coming up.
Oh, this could be a bumpy road, Mr. Chair.
This could very well be, no, I have a feeling that it's smoothed over now, but, uh, this is, uh, speed bumps at, uh, at Legion Park, and I asked this to, uh, be put on the agenda some time ago. Uh, simply, simply because the speed bumps that, uh, were originally installed have been damaged or stolen or whatever the case might be, but I understand that the work will be completed within the next month.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Perfect, thank you. We're going to move on to the Dundas Street Road depression, and we do have a briefing note in front of us here, um, unfortunately, it says there's no scheduled work, uh, to be, to be done. I'm thinking this is about three, uh, three years old, where this main was replaced, and then it was fixed, and this has been ongoing for about three years, am I correct in, in assuming that?
Through, through the Chair, I would, I would anticipate that it's, it's probably longer than that, it's probably about eight, five, six years.
Okay, okay, um, the point that I'd like, I'd, I'd like to make on, on this, and this is not the only, um, area in, within, within the village of, of Cardinal, that things just didn't seem to be cleaned up or finished completely, uh, when, when it was done, and, and, you know, this has been going on now for, for quite some time, and I know it gets better towards the summer of the year, but there's still quite a depression there, and still quite a, quite a bump, and what brought it to my attention was that well, someone had coffee spilled on them when they went over the bump, and, and that's, that's what, that's what instigated the ins- situation that I brought it to your attention, but when we, when we do these repairs, do we try our, do we try our best that we get it done right, and so we don't have these, these ongoing problems?
Through the Chair, o- obviously, um, we, we, we certainly do, but depending on, uh, when, uh, events like, like a water break occur in, in December, January, uh, the available material to, to make some of those proper repairs is, is not available due to its pros. So we, we, we do our best, and, and we do, uh, attempt to do our, our best to compact prior to, to the, to the asphalt, um, over, overcoated being done, so, sometimes, those items happen.
Any, any other, uh, remarks?
I, I'd just like to follow up on this, because, um, these depressions, uh, get annoying, and, uh, they occur almost every place we replace across Culver, and, um, I have different contractors telling me that unless you handle these, um, correctly, you'll always get the depression, so my first question is, do, do we work to, uh, to a, a V shape excavation so that we're coming up uh, with slanted sides as opposed to perpendicular, and the second part of that question is, are we compacting on the way up? Or, and I can understand if we're doing this in January, that, you know, well, I guess the question is, uh, do we, do we have a, a capacity or, or ability or a facility where we can store any amount or some amount or some small amount of, um, fill material to go in on top of a, of a replacement? And then the second part of that is, if we're doing it in January and we don't have the right materials, do we, do we go back to it in the spring before we put the pavement on and and then rehabilitate the, the road excavation and compact it properly before the patch goes on? It just seems to me that there is a way of doing these patches where you don't get that slumpage, um, and, and we just don't seem to have been able to find that way.
So, so through the Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll try to answer that with a, a number of questions, um, but we'll, we'll, we'll use this, um, for this case in front of you a- as a good example. You're, you're, you're forgetting in this, in these particular circumstances that you have stormwater, you've got underground, potentially underground bell, underground natural gas. In, in an ideal world, y- yeah, there, there, there's V shapes in, in compaction that, uh, at, at every foot, and, and a number of those items can, can be done. Where there, where there's room to, to work in certain cases like this, uh, we, we, we had about two feet to work in between utilities, so we do the best that we can in, in those circumstances, and sometimes you, you get, you get some settlement. And, and these are some of those items that, uh, we, we, we put in the budget for, 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 for patching and repairs as some of these things come up, so that as some of these things come up, so that we, we can add a later date. Try, try to get those repaired, so that, so that they don't continue.
Okay, if I could just add a little bit, I guess what, what interests me is that we were told, I think in a previous meeting, and I may have the numbers slightly wrong, but we've allocated the contract for Pittston Road and Weir Road. And it seemed to me that we were told that there were twenty-one cross culverts that had to be replaced uh, prior to the actual work being done, or the final work being done. And that we were going to do those cross culverts with our own, um, with our own forces. So I'm, the way I'm kind of looking at it, I don't know what the schedule is for Pittston Road or Weir Road. But, uh, I don't think you can do much more than one cross culvert, culvert in a day. So that would seem to me to say that we need probably a month's work, twenty working days in a month. Uh, we need probably a month's work to get those twenty-one cross culverts replaced on Pittston and Weir Road. And, um, I'm just worried that since no work has started at this point in time, that we'll be kind of rushing at the last minute to keep ahead of the contractor. And, um, you know, I, I'm, I for one, I'm going to be disappointed if next spring I start to see slumpages where those twenty-one cross culverts were replaced. And if, if we end up doing it in a hurry and, and not being able to get it done properly, I don't know. I'd like to hear a little bit from, uh, Mr. Packwood here about that, because I know slumpage is a part of the game, but how do you do this so that you get it a little bit better? It's not happening quite so often, I guess is my question, Mr. Chair.
I understand the only, why, why I feel it's, it's so critical, this is, this is, this is actually a county road, but it's, it's one of the two major thoroughfares into the, into the village. And a stranger or a tourist or whatever coming in and gets a jolt coming, coming through Dundas Street is, I, I, I just think, I just don't think it's, um, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, it's not being done in, in two thousand nineteen. Comments, questions?
Cross culverts are very hard to do. Uh, normally, Mr. Grant says, like you do ten-one for a frost taper. But sometimes it doesn't always work out for you, because you may not have enough cover at the top of the pipe. And you'll get a bump. And, uh, depends on what the sub grade is like within the, the ten-to-one, too, can have a problem, can cause a problem. It's not an easy solution.
Consular?
I think one of the problems we've had over the years of putting these trac calls in, as Mr. Packwood said, they're a very difficult thing in this township to put in, because we have a lot of our roads in this township, it just doesn't have the sub surface till we're on rock. We get that frost coming off, there's nothing much you can do about it. But the one thing I think we have lacked, you know, over the years, I don't think we've provided our roads crew with the proper equipment for compacting. I know a lot of the time it's, it's been done with the high-o packing, trying to pack it down. And I think sometimes we, we need to have increased our budget enough to them to allow them to have the proper, get a proper compaction machine to have available to them to pack these, or at least have the funds to rent one on their doing it, that we get proper compaction on. I think that's, some of the times it's, maybe the, the grade hasn't been just exactly the pits that we want, we want on some of where you go, go across. And, and for my sake, if we're doing a new road, like we're doing Weir and, and, and Pittston Road, I don't think there's any reason not to have it. But as our operation manager said, when you're doing repairs, it's pretty hard, hard to, when you're digging in alone. And even in, in the country, on the side roads, when you're trying to do it in the winter time, you can't get a slant on there when you've got three foot of frost in there, unless you're willing to pay for a jackhammer to come in and start jackhammering and digging, and then you still got difference in, the difference in the sub material you're using. Because all our old roads, let's face it, none of them were built proper, proper thirty years ago. They're, most of it was all gravel that was used, very little rock used, used. So you got, and all the gravel in this township, our pit included, had a lot of clay in it. Clay causes heating problems among your, among your gra- gravel. So like, you're up against it in a lot of places that you don't get it. And we're not the only township, you can go down through Matilda, down through the clay, down through the side roads, down through there in the spring of the year, bump, 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 every, you don't have to look where the culverts are, you can see them ahead of you, so. I just think we maybe need to give, have a, as our mayor said, we need to get the time and not be trying to rush them to get them in. We need to spend the money on making sure we have the proper compaction equipment there for them to do a proper job on, so.
Well, that's all rentable on a daily basis, and, uh,
I think sometimes we just didn't bother renting, because we got in a hurry and tried to pack.
And that's my worry.
Tried to pack them in with the, the high-o packing on them, instead of having the proper vibration packing.
Okay, any other, uh, any other comments, concerns, questions? Okay, we'll move on, thank you. Unopened road allowance, Buyer's Road, and I believe this is for, uh, some farm use. And who's speaking to this, Dave, is that your department?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. We've, uh, we've, we've had a request for permission to remove trees along the unopened road allowance. Uh, included a map to, uh, that shows the area. Item number one is the, the unopened road allowance area. And, uh, item number two on the map, uh, shows the agricultural land.
Move to accept the recommendation?
I have a mover, do I have a seconder? Consular Hunter, thank you. Um, you've had a chance to, uh, to read the briefing notes, et cetera. I'll call the question, all in favor? All right, Kerry. Next one, temporary road closure, Optimist Club Soapbox Derby. And this has always been a favorite of mine. And, uh, I understand they're back to Gooden Road again, I, I think. Good. And, uh, who would speak to this?
Um, Mr. Grant, I believe you took this request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So once again, the Optimist Club is looking to, to have their annual Soapbox Derby. Returning to Gooden Road this year, I guess they wanted a little steeper hill to, to, to increase heat times. So, um, in, in front of you, it looks like the event is June twenty-second, uh, between nine AM and two PM. Typically, we supply barricades, and we work with the Optimist Club to ensure that all affected residents and emergency services are aware of the, uh, the closure.
And there's really no financial considerations or cost, except some in-kind barriers, barricades. Uh, could I have a mover for the, uh, for the recommendation? Consular Dillibaugh, seconder, Mr. Packwood? Thank you, all in favor? And that is Kerry, thank you. The next one is the pickup truck tender, ECPW nineteen oh seven. I believe, uh, I believe our CIO would like to speak to this, am I correct?
I would introduce the item, Mr. Chair, for committee's discussion. We did tender a pickup truck as directed by, by, uh, committee and council. Not very successfully, unfortunately. We have had an opportunity to speak with the sole bidder in this tender and confirm, uh, that the reasons for the truck price being as high as it was. One area was the sixty-day requirement to hold the price for sixty days, uh, which was part of the tender package. And that meant that they were not prepared to put a hold on a vehicle that was already on their lot for that period of time. And also, uh, the limited financing options. Uh, we had sort of counted on a zero percent option there, but the tender process puts um, the purchase through the commercial division of the, of the car, the automobile dealer. So the percentage was actually six point four nine. So, um, we have advised that sole bidder that the truck was not within budget requirements. And, uh, and she has provided us with written acceptance, that she understands that and it has no problem with the township canceling the tender and start procurement process over. We've also confirmed that, uh, that's okay with the township solicitor, just to be sure. So our recommendation is that, uh, we reject the single tenders and restart the process and following the township procurement policy under bylaw twenty fifteen fifty-seven, which for items under fifty thousand dollars requires three quotes.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So a couple of questions here. Um, I see a difference between canceling the tender and rejecting the single, uh, submission. So I don't have a problem to, to cancel the tender. But I, I, I'm reluctant to reject the single tender as recommended here. I don't think the things, that it's the same thing. That's my first concern. The second concern is, uh, in the second paragraph of the briefing note, what part of the direction was inconsistent with the procurement policy?
Uh, the direction was to issue a full tender specification for the purchase. And on items between twenty and fifty thousand dollars, uh, three quotes is what's required.
Yes, but would a tender not lead to a quote?
It, it's quite a different process, Mr. Mayor.
Insofar as quotes are solicited, but so are tenders. Tenders is just a wider solicitation. And I don't understand why the two are in, are, are in, why, why it's inconsistent.
In a quote situation, through the chair, sorry, Mr. Chair. In a quote situation, uh, we can be a bit more flexible if we, if we call for quotations. Um, and there's a vehicle available that doesn't quite need the specification for some reason. Perhaps it's got rubber mat flooring instead of carpet, or the other way around. But it's available, and it's maybe last year's model, it's within our price range, we can, we can be a bit more flexible. As soon as you start issuing a tender document, which has a list of specifications that the bidder has to check off yes, no, yes, no, then it becomes a bit more difficult to be that flexible.
Fair comment, fair comment, fair comment.
So we might be able to get considerably less money at any particular.
Go ahead for a request.
Yes.
And, and also, I'm hoping that by doing it that way, we'll get some zero percent financing options there, too.
It's just that, you know, the, the county, you know, went to tenders. And, uh, I was going to try to look up and see what the tenders came in on for pickup trucks, I just didn't have time. But they were tendered, and there was a whole, there was quite a few, I think there was a total of about eight items in the tender package that went out. Some companies tendered to all eight, some companies tendered only to the pickup trucks, some companies tendered only to the heavy trucks. But it, it was a tender. Now, what I don't know is the difference in the way the two tenders, the township tender and the county tender, I don't know the difference in the way those two tenders were structured or written. But it just that it was a tender process. And it did produce, in my opinion, when I saw the numbers, relatively good pricing on the, on the vehicles. Now, mind you, I, I will admit that in the county tender package, it was just a straight purchase, cash to, cash to tender, so fair enough. Uh, but now, can I get back to the other point, Mr. Chairman? The difference between rejecting the single tender and canceling the open tender? Because the tender is open until canceled or approved, as I thought.
And, and.
Or canceled.
No, maybe, I'm sure you're quite correct, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to see an amendment to that recommendation, that council canceled, canceled the tender and restart the process.
Mr. Black, sorry, Mr. Packwood?
There's a number of the cardinars selling trucks now that are year-old, like four. And I know you're getting those for about thirty thousand dollars. So could you not go to quotes instead of the tender?
That's what I'd like to do now, yet we've tried the tender, didn't work, let's go to quotes.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense, really.
Any other questions, Deputy Mayor?
So the, the tender process is, is an unusual way to, to go about the way that we did this one?
In this instance, yes. You know, over the past several years, we've purchased a number of pickup trucks, and always through quotations, and we've had reasonably good success.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Am I wrong? Am I dreaming that the reason we went the tender route this time was for fear of quote shopping or something? Was that a discussion at the table, that there was some concern about quotes being compared and being shopped? And is that, is that now why we instructed to do a tender versus, versus a quote?
Uh, through the chair, if I may, I believe there, there was a problem some, several years ago with respect to what you're referring to. Um, but that may have, that, that may have fed the direction, I don't know. Certainly, we learned our lesson that, probably ten years ago now, and hasn't, hasn't happened since.
So trouble, we're in trouble.
I, I think it, I think it's clear from the one, the one, uh, tender that we received, that we're not going to get what we're looking for, uh, for the price range that, that we're looking for. Uh, and then just to jump upon what, uh, Mr. Packwood has said, uh, you know, I wrote in my notes, you know, is it, is it worth it to ask for quotations on a one-year-old used or demo model to, uh, to, to, to open that up, you know, for a discussion? That, you know, pick a kilometer number, be it twenty thousand kilometers or thirty thousand kilometers, and, and put it out there, and then, and then allow it through the quotation.
And, and certainly, if I may, through the chair, certainly, uh, staff looks for all those options using that quotation method. If there's a demo out there that's got six or seven thousand kilometers on it, as long as the warranty's in place, there'd be no reason not to do that.
I think you're telling us you know how to buy a truck.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Or we don't.
I didn't say, I didn't say that. Okay, we do have a recommendation. Can I have a mover to, to accept the recommendation?
As amended.
As amended? Okay, and how would, how, as amended, how would it read?
Uh, the committee recommends that council cancel the tender and restart the process as per the township procurement policy.
Okay, that's, that's fine, is that, is that fine? Do I have a seconder? Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to call the question, all in favor? And that's Kerry, thank you. Moving along, Consular Inquiries slash Notice of Motion.
I'd say, I, I'm inquiry, I know we passed it council a while ago, and I come through committee here a while ago, but no parking along county road in front of the, our auction house up there. Have we heard any results back from the counties on passing the bylaw, if we can erect the signs? Or I know our auctioneer has been very good at his auctions, trying, telling people not to park on that side of the road, but you can see how well they listen to him.
I, I've heard nothing further from the county.
So I can report a little bit. Uh, so I discussed this specific item with, uh, the director of, um, roads uh, about a week and a half ago. Because I had, uh, two pictures taken on two different Sundays, and I know that he's posting it on his website, and I know that as well as posting it on his website, I hear that he makes announcements during the auction. But those pictures show vehicles parked on that side of the road. And, um, I know that the director has spoken to the auctioneer, and the auctioneer has assured him that he intends to enlarge his parking lot. And I said, well, you know, the interesting thing is that his intentions to enlarge his parking lot is good, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. But, you know, on the day that I had pictures taken, there was this, a, a handmade sign put at the side of the road, advertising that today was the day of the auction. I said, you're going to walk out there and post that sign? Please, could he not at the same time post the two signs that we had made that said, no parking this side? Please, could he not at the same time post the two signs that we had made that said, no parking this side? That would solve it. But we can't get some cooperation there. So, I said, from my point of view, I would hope that the town, that the county would pass the bylaw, put the bylaw in effect, and then leave it up to us. The county's not gonna enforce it, it's up to us to enforce it. So, have the county pass the bylaw. And we'll determine whether it's gonna be necessary to go the next step or not. But at least we will have the authority of the county bylaw behind us if it's necessary to proceed. And if it's necessary to proceed, you know, we need a couple of signs. And our bylaw officer out there on a Sunday, that's what we need. So, the Director has indicated to me that he's still mulling things over. And he'll talk again to the auctioneer and he'll talk again to me. And then eventually, he'll make a recommendation to County Council.
Long, a little too long.
A little bit, a little bit. I've learned to have to be patient at County Council.
Really?
Patience.
Okay, anything else on item, item number eight from anyone?
Yes, now, on item number eight, I do have a comment. So, one of the things, our challenges from our municipal modernization challenge, if I can put it that way, was to find ways to do things more efficiently. And to that end, and I know I'm, I'm kind of springing this onto staff and my apologies for it. But at the next meeting, or I'm providing notice of motion here now, that I will bring forward a motion that we follow through with our intention to divest of one of our older graders, the oldest grader. And I would like to have, before the date that that motion comes forward, I would like to have the maintenance records for both graders for twenty eighteen, all of twenty eighteen, and the maintenance records for close to the date of the motion on twenty nineteen. And my thinking is the following. I know that we're still keeping both graders on fleet. I know that during this past year, we did use the second grader a couple of times. But as we learned at one of our earlier meetings, we have a neighboring, we have a neighbor that is also maintaining two graders. And they really only have reuse for one and a half, about the same as us. And there appears to be a willingness to share. Now, that's not always the best situation. And you can always get into the comment, into the situation where they need their grader for ice blading or blading a road, and we need it at the same time. But maybe there's a way of working that out. And depending on what the numbers show me when I see the maintenance numbers, I think that there may be some savings there for each of us. I don't know what their numbers are. But I think that any operational difficulties that we can run into by having to either borrow a grader or rent a grader will be less than the cost of maintaining the grader on fleet and maintaining it. And certainly, less than replacing it. So, I'm gonna put that motion forward, it can be debated when it comes forward. But I am asking the staff to provide for that meeting, and I'll write the motion in the next week or so. I'm asking the staff to prepare the, the records, the maintenance records for twenty eighteen and as close as possible to date on twenty nineteen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Clarification, move on.
On this grader issue, I, I feel like, I feel like we're doing things in the wrong order, Mr. Mayor, by getting rid of the disposition, going through the disposition process. And we already have the motion to dispose of that second grader. So, I think, I think talking about maintenance records and making sure that, you know, that operationally we could manage a grader and a half, for lack of a better description, is, is a very reasonable thing to look at. But I have a feeling that rather than going through the notice of motion, could we not just ask for it to come forward at Public Works Meeting in June? And staff will prepare a report with the appropriate backup documentation?
So, through the chair, so. See, my, my memory tells me that at one time, we not only declared it surplus, but we asked that it be disposed of. And it, it didn't get actually into the, into the sale.
The auction was canceled.
Yeah, the auction was canceled. And so, it ended up back on fleet and back on maintenance. And, I mean, I don't have any problem if we rely on the original motions, provided that we execute. And so, my putting this notice of motion here at this point is to start the discussion over again, if I can put it that way, and bring this issue to the forefront one more time for what I hope will be a resolution. So, that's all that I'm trying to do. And if you choose to do it by bringing your report forward with a recommendation, I'm happy with that.
I, I think I would prefer to do it that way, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. My concern is that we've got four graders, two of which we're pretty sure of the condition of. The other two, we're not as sure. And maybe it's not one of ours that needs to be got rid of if we're going to three. So, I, I'd just like an opportunity to have that conversation with our neighbors and.
Yeah, and I quite agree. And through the chair, if I may, the other, the other option, of course, is rentals.
Yes.
And, and I do believe that within the area, the general area, that there are operators who we would be able to enter into an agreement with, or we might be able to enter into an agreement with, depending on, you know, how staff pursued it. But we might be able to enter into preferential rental agreements with, with some of the private operators to supply as needed on request within X hours. And, you know, I mean, at a rate to be, at a rate to be negotiated. I, I'm just looking for a way of starting this ball rolling.
And, and if I may, the Director of Operations was able to achieve just exactly what you're talking about in a rental room with a local supplier when we needed it this past spring, so.
Okay, so.
I'm just interested in the mayor's comment about getting rid of the, the grader. Like, yes, we can, in the winter time, we can probably get a standby agreement. We need two graders to ice blade. I have no problem with that. Problem I have with going down to one grader is, in my opinion, neither one of these graders are dependable. They're both old graders. One is really old, that one's by its prime by a long shot, too. We've seen that with the maintenance we're having done out there now. If we're going to move to one and depend on a rental one, I'd sooner see us either get rid of both these graders and either get a, a new one on lease or a new one on a long-term purchase agreement or something. At least, we know the one grader we do have that we can depend on, that when we go to it, it's, it's ready to go. Our other grader, grader is what, fifteen, sixteen years old now, newest one?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
The newest one is twenty-two?
Yeah, I think back in eighty-eight.
Ninety-seven, I think.
How many hours on it?
Dave, would you?
No.
Through, through the chair, I, I, I'm not able to answer that a while.
And, and.
Wouldn't expect that.
Yeah, and through the, through the chair, I could, in response to Counselor Hunter, hey, I got an open mind on this. Because, again, depending on the hours, you know, I'm not so sure that I wouldn't be, that I would be averse. I mean, I certainly would be open to hearing the discussion about renting a grader for X number of hours. You know, and I'm not totally averse to lease the purchase either, especially if, if our newest one is twenty-three years old. Because I think there's an argument that can be made with a twenty-three-year-old grader that we're being more efficient by getting into a new lease arrangement. And which satisfies, in my mind, the challenge that we've been presented, to find more efficient ways of doing things. Operating new equipment is always more efficient than operating older equipment and trying to maintain it. Learned that in school bus business, no question.
You have an argument, too, if we're gonna enter into an agreement with Augusta, I assume, is who you're mentioning with. But you gotta have good equipment to enter into an agreement with. If you're gonna back one a number up, you can't be saying, I'm gonna back you up and say, sorry, our grader's.
U.S.
Yeah.
Good, good, we'll have a good discussion, Mr. Chairman.
We will, yes. Do I hear anything else? Okay. And we'll move on. Number eight, I'm sorry, number nine is the mayor's report. And does the mayor have a report?
Just, just a short one. So, first of all, my apologies to council for this late notice about the MP's visit at the port. Friday was just a crazy day. Didn't recollect myself until last night. Thought I sent a motion out to all the counselors, but forgot to put the counselor's name on it. So, I think by now, everybody's aware that the MP will be visiting the port at three-thirty tomorrow. Everybody's invited. But please let the clerk know, because if there's more than three of us there, the clerk has to be there. Now, the opportunity there is to speak to our MP about our application under the National Trade Corridors Fund, we're all aware of that. We spent four hours today, four of us, four hours, sixteen hours, going through our comprehensive project proposal, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, following the guide to the t. So, that project is coming to an end. The only other thing I wanted to talk about is the Rooney Road project. So, on Friday, I did have an opportunity to speak to Minister Monte McNauton, the Minister of Infrastructure, about our Rooney Road project. Now, the province still has a number of projects in the hopper that they're waiting to nominate to the feds. They have already nominated, I think, forty-nine projects to the feds. Now, these are road and bridge projects that various municipalities had submitted to the province under the OCIF program. And they were prepared to use their OCIF top-ups to do these projects. So, all of those projects that were road and bridge projects, not including ours, which was a sewer and water project, all of those projects have now been submitted to the feds. The next batch of projects that are going to the feds are the batch of projects which includes County Road forty-three. And that batch will be going to the feds probably within the next week or so. Minister McNauton reported twice on Friday that he has the assurance of the Federal Minister of Infrastructure that Ontario's priorities are the federal government's priorities. So, you can read that to say that whatever Ontario nominates, the federal government will fund. Okay, now, that's, I mean, that's the way he phrased it, so that's the way I'm repeating. So, with that background, I said to the minister, minister, I don't know what your capacity is going to be for additional applications under the Roads and Bridges project, which just closed on, when was it, the eighteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. I don't know what your capacity is. But we, our township, have also nominated and submitted a project to you. We're looking for a small amount of funding. And I'd like to have an opportunity to lobby you on behalf of that project in the next, near future. Didn't want to bend him too bad on that first encounter. And he said, yes, by all means. So, I left him with the little briefing note that the CAO had prepared for me, one copy for him, one copy for Minister Clark. Spoke to Minister Clark again today about the Rudy Road project. Told him that I would be looking for an opportunity to go back to Minister McNauton one more time and pitch that project. Had his assurances that that would happen. So, that's my little report, we'll see what happens next. Oh, and there's one other thing, sorry, one other thing. On the thirtieth, which is next Thursday, Mayor Jones and I, and Mayor Todd from Prescott, will meet with the Minister of Transportation, which is the Honorable Jeff Urick, concerning our Highway four oh one issues. And you'll remember that we entered the provincial task force. United Counties had two nominees on the task force. The Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus had one representative, which was Mayor Todd. And there were about eight to twelve other members on the task force. Now, the task force submitted its, it submitted a report right towards the end of the last government's tenure. And some people called it the final report, other people called it the interim report, other people called it the first report. But that report left about four initiatives that the task force had started underway, left those initiatives unfinished. So, Mayor Jones and I have been lobbying since the Roma Conference in January for Minister Urick to reinstitute the task force or at least to finish the four or five unfinished initiatives. So, that will be the purpose of the meeting on the thirtieth. And we'll see what the minister has to say about completing those initiatives to try to make Highway four oh one a little tiny bit safer in times of adverse weather events where, such as the one in which the, the driver was killed. So, that's, that's the extent of the report, sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's, all right. Okay, moving on to question period. Mrs. Mallett?
No, thanks.
Nothing? Move on, we have no closed session. So, what we have left is adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Deputy Mayor and Mr. Packwood, thank you. I'll call the question, all in favor of adjournment at, I'm sorry.
Seven fifty-six.
Seven fifty-six P.M. All in favor?
Mine.
Carrie, thank you.